Funding is based on, funding is based on enrollment. And the Student Opportunity Act takes into consideration certain wealth factors. Meaning there is a bump for students of where English is second language learners, special needs. And there's a variety of metrics that we can go over. I know that Brian Callahan had asked specifically about the fourteen percent increase in out of school district placement cost. So first I want to address why that was. It is my understanding that teachers in those schools were being paid thirty thousand dollars less than the median income of Massachusetts school teachers. In the governor's budget, there is a proposal to fund the special education circuit breaker at five hundred and three million, which is a fourteen percent increase. And specifically looking at covering most of this out of district school placement. I don't think it's at a hundred percent, but I think it's it's quite high. I want to say ninety, but we'll have to ask Manny if that's correct. Of, I think those were the main concerns of the Newburyport school system. So do you want to just start by asking me questions that I can then go and help us answer?
Don, I have a question about what you just you just said with that funding. You don't mean fully funding the tuition, you mean fully funding the increase in the tuition, is that? I mean, that was, but.
Well, I mean, basically that says the budget proposes to fund the special education circuit breaker.
Okay.
Five hundred and three million.
Right, so that's seventy-five percent reimbursement.
We would get a higher level of reimbursement, but we're not talking about having our district placement totally funded.
No.
Right, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
There will be enough funding there to hopefully ensure that.
Offset, the increase.
Some of our, covered by recent circuit break.
Great, okay, thank you.
Yeah, specifically it says this investment includes a fifteen million dollar increase for relief to help districts adjust. To a fourteen percent tuition increase at chapter seven six six special education schools.
Great.
And it goes on to say, and there is a commitment to pursue an additional year of relief funding opportunities in the forthcoming supplemental budget. Okay.
Right, yeah, so that's the part of for all districts for the city council and Phil. Jump in if you would like, so there's extraordinary relief, so if you do have, for example. And this is happening to us, we have a scenario, we have a out of district placement student for seventy thousand dollars, so that's what we anticipate. Students aren't making effective progress, you know, throughout the school year. Needs a residential, which is twenty-four hour care, so that's seventy thousand out of district placement tuition. Once that student goes to a residential, that cost is now four hundred and, I think it's four hundred and seventy-six.
No, fuck.
Five twenty-five, which happened to us from July first to now, because, you know, student needs, things change. So what Miss Chan saying is now we can apply for extraordinary relief because of that scenario.
Yeah.
Through the state. It's not guaranteed that you do get, you know, but what it sounds like is the governor is adding money to that extraordinary relief for districts that. Have scenarios like that.
Yeah.
For us, and I was talking to Council McCauley. As part of last year's budget, if you recall, we moved three hundred thousand dollars into Esser. For the free full day tuition. Because we couldn't claim those students as part of our student enrollment because parents were paying. So this year, because we added those students, we did get a bump in our chapter seventy. It's three, you know, when we're looking at the student enrollment piece, it was three hundred and seventy. So what was it, three hundred and seventy-six thousand or something like that? For our tuition, so now those kindergarten students are part of our enrollment, which goes into the formula of chapter seventy. So for for our district. And this is the breakdown for every district in the Commonwealth. You know, for chapter seventy, so last year we received. Four million, six hundred eighty-one thousand, four thirty-three for chapter seventy funds. This year, as machine stated, we're at five million, six hundred. And sixty-one forty-five with an increase of nine seventy-eight, seventy-two. So that's part of some of that, the formula that goes into that, and that's what we did. Part of the documents that you have, we kind of gave an overview of school choice and how chapter seventies calculate, so. That's kind of where we're at.
Superintendent, I just wanted to want to point out that Manny Cruz is on the attendees.
Oh, great, would you please let him in as a, would you promote him to participant? Thank you.
Question that I had, maybe you and Phil can answer, we have to split that chapter seventy money with the charter student.
Yeah, so the chapter seventy money goes to the city and to the mayor. And and we obviously, as we receive funding for different grants. We, you know, we let the city and the mayor kind of figure out, you know, how much of that is going to go to. The charter school and how much is coming to us, so for example, we have a hundred and twenty-seven. Students that are going to the charter and our per pupil cost kind of follow those.
Manny's declining to be promoted to panelist. So. He doesn't want the promotion.
Oh, for example.
Try again.
If five million is coming in chapter seventy, then a portion.
Okay, there we go.
Would have to go.
Good.
Significant.
Good morning, apologies, my, my, um, my son had pressed the wrong button.
I'm one twenty-seven students, so you would. Assume that that's the amount that's going to go over.
Can I ask a quick follow on that, so maybe for Ethan? Ethan, on the cherry sheet, the charter school sending tuition, is that? What we're talking about, that's the number, right, on the cherry sheet?
Yeah, so that's the, it's roughly two point three million in the House one budget.
What I'm confused about is last year, the sending tuition was two point two. Zero seven, to be accurate, and this year it's two point two six seven. So are we saying that actually that two point two six seven is still subject to negotiation? Because it's a much smaller percentage increase. Of what what is shown on the cherry sheet to be going to the charter than what our overall increases? I don't know if that's better for Phil or Ethan or anybody, if any, if the question even makes sense at first. Yeah, do you know what I mean?
I I know what you mean.
Okay.
The way I look at it, I don't look at funding as specific buckets that get assigned or tagged to specific students. It's all part of the overall funding number.
Okay.
And since the charter school students are Newburyport students. You take number of students who enrolled here within the public school district, which is twenty-two hundred plus the charter school, that's twenty-three fifty. Then you buy the amount of aid you're getting with the twenty-three fifty, get the average per student amount. So as been said, that that number's been pushed up a lot for the upcoming year because of changes in terms of. The edge of kindergarten and. The SOA and other things, so.
Okay.
If you look at it, our per pupil costs haven't gone up that much. So if they have the same number of students over there, you're right, counselor, that number's not going to go up as much because. Our per pupil costs haven't gone up that much, what has gone up is one of our funding sources is going up. A lot, I think we're like nine point eight percent in terms of chapter seventy for next year. So when I look at it, I don't look at it as, no, I've got this bucket of money that I have to sign up, or this bucket of money. I've got all these flows that come to a certain number, then we have to figure out how we pay for this.
Okay.
That helps or.
No, it 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 helps, I guess what I'm not clear on is, is there an agreement that governs how much is it, you know? I understand the philosophy, it's just so, we don't have control over that two point two six seven number.
It's state law, they come up with per pupil number.
Got it.
You know, if you look at our per pupil number, and they do make some adjustments at Desi, because they will pull out some of the special ed costs.
Got it.
Because charter schools do not send students out of district. If student needs to get a special ed student needs to go out of district, they're sent back to their home district, so therefore. The per pupil they get is actually brought down a little bit because of that.
So my last thing is, so it seems like the district is the winner in this, you're getting a bump of nine hundred and sixty-seven, nine hundred and sixty K. And only sixty of that is going to the charter.
I would say that the city is the winner in terms of getting the increase in funding.
But just that it's been a philosophical conversation for years about the charter and what they get versus the district and the breakdown. All I'm saying is out of the nine sixty, if I'm, if the cherry sheet is, I'm reading it correctly. The the bulk of the increase comes to Newburyport Public Schools, that's all, just numerically, maybe I should leave the editorial.
And the way, the way you look at it also, that's the cherry sheet. The funding that goes to the charter school gets taken right off the state aid that comes here, that's how you can look at it. You think it states this much, the charter is going to get this much, the vote's going to get this much before it ever gets here, right?
Right.
Charter money comes right off the top.
Yeah, right.
Just like the vote does.
Okay, can I just interject something?
Sure.
I just want, because my colleague Representative Cruz is here, I just want to jump in and just say a few things about where the budget could go from here. Because there is a great deal of talk about adding more money to the education buzzet budget. Right? Mr. Cruz?
Yes, thank you so much, Representative Shannon, uh, thank you to the honorable members of the school committee and city council that are present for having me today. Uh, I myself am still serving as the vice chair of the Salem School Committee, uh, so I, like you all, uh, am a glutton for punishment, uh, in my service. Uh, to public education, so, uh, with respect to Representative Shan's, uh, comments on, um, the budget development process. As folks are, I'm sure quite familiar with, um, the governor's budget provides kind of the baseline. Uh, for districts as we're starting to begin the budget planning process, uh, and then the House, uh, and the Senate are going to go next. So, um, it is my understanding that right now we are in the midst of seven different hearings, uh, through the ways and means. Uh, education recently had their hearing, uh, earlier this week on Monday, uh, in which, uh, we had folks from MMA. Wilder, various advocates, uh, who were coming in to kind of just describe the situation currently in public education post pandemic and what's needed. So I would anticipate we'll see the budget on the House side, uh, in the second week of April. Um, and one of the things that we still have an opportunity to do. Uh, as members of the of the general court is to advocate for particular increases. Uh, and so you're you're reaching out to Representative Shand at a really great time, uh, in which she's going to be able to, uh, communicate with the chair. Around anything from, uh, what you're experiencing with special education tuition increases. Uh, any challenges that you might be having with respect to charter reimbursement, this always comes up for the members. Uh, and there's generally been a push, uh, to try to, um, in increase, uh, the funding that's going directly to districts and try to balance that sheet. With respect to the charters, uh, and then the other piece that I would just mention is that, um, the per pupil number that you're seeing, uh, in the H one. Um, there's usually a, an advocacy push, uh, from the members of the general court. Uh, and the House has been pretty good about this with respect to increases, uh, in the per pupil allotments, um, and so. I would anticipate that, uh, in the debate, we'll probably see a fair number of legislators, myself included. Uh, we're going to continue to push that this new allocation of funding, uh, of education, uh, i- it is going to go, uh, also. Still to K through twelve, I know that there's this burning desire to scale up early ed, uh, and certainly, uh, addressing the needs of higher education. Uh, but fundamentally, I think that there's an understanding on the House side. That the students that remain the most impacted and the budgets that remain the most impacted are K through twelve, uh, especially with the looming cliffs. That are coming in the in the upcoming fiscal years, uh, with respect to Esther dollars drying up. Um, and one of the things that I had a conversation with Representative Shand about, um, earlier this week was that there has been an effort to try to address. Um, some of the technical challenges with respect to the chapter seventy formula, so over the last four years, I've been working with now Lieutenant Governor Driscoll. Um, Leader Peish, uh, who was the former chair of the Education Committee and Senator Lewis. On trying to address some of the the challenges in the chapter seventy formula that were left unattended to. Uh, and this includes, uh, some of the aid that goes to minimum aid communities, um, some of the technical aspects around below effort communities. Um, and really also thinking about some of the redistribution elements, uh, associated with the cap on contributions. So there is a legislative proposal that right now is in draft that I briefed the representative on that I'm, uh, leading on with Senator Lewis. Senator Lovely and a few other folks that are, uh, experiencing some challenges with chapter seventy, uh, in which we are seeking to, um, uh. Number one, direct some of the dollars from the question one amendment, uh, into the K through twelve system. Uh, and to ensure that some of these, uh, districts that have received, um, technical penalties either as minimal, minimum aid communities, below effort communities. Uh, or that are rural, uh, have an opportunity to see an increase in their chapter seventy dollars. Um, and, uh, and then, and then also trying to set up, um, some form of a pothole account to try to address this in the short term. Uh, but then in the long term, uh, we do need another commission that reexamines, uh, our chapter seventy formula. Uh, to ensure that, uh, it is as equitable as it can be, uh, for, um, not only. Our rural communities, our smaller towns, uh, but to the municipalities that have really stepped up when it comes to public education. Uh, and are well above net spending and are really at the limits with respect to what they're able to contribute, uh, locally, so I do. Uh, just want to share, uh, with the members of this committee that there is a desire to try to address some of the inequities with respect to, um, the chapter seventy formula. Um, I don't imagine that we'll do something as sweeping, um, as what we did with the Student Opportunity Act, but I imagine. That we'd have a more targeted solution, uh, in the long run, and the good news is that, uh, because we have, um, Lieutenant Governor Driscoll. Uh, in the administration, she's already taken a lead in this budget in trying to increase, um, funding that's going to minimum aid communities. Uh, and there is a proposal that's currently tied to the larger bucket item, uh, that would create a pothole account, so you should see an additional. Uh, supplementation if if the Newburyport, uh, public schools are in fact the minimum aid community. Um, so, uh, and those conversations remain ongoing with House Ways and Means, uh, in with the Senate. And I'm actually on my way in today for my meeting with Chair Michaelitz, uh, in which, um, I've encouraged my colleagues like Representative Shand. And others who are in minimum aid communities to continue to talk about, um, the importance of redirecting some of the funding, uh, to K through twelve districts. Uh, from the excess revenues that continue to be collected here in the Commonwealth.
Right.
So that's what I have to share on my end, happy to answer your question.
Thank you. Another, another area of interest, I just wanted to see if you wanted to know more about where we are with the fair share amendment.
Sure.
Yes.
So essentially, we've created a, the governor has put forth the idea of having a stabilization fund. Essentially, with, we believe and have agreed that one billion dollars will be collected in fiscal year twenty-four, or actually twenty-three. And in twenty-four, we would spend it. Um, it's going to be split pretty evenly between education and transportation. I think transportation is getting four hundred and ninety million and education will get, uh, five hundred and, you know, one million dollars. There are a lot of discussions about where the money is going to go. Oh, you know, there are efforts to stabilize the higher education system and make tuitions. Less expensive as well as building more green infrastructure. There was a long list, but I think for our purposes today, what we're talking about is. Increasing infrastructure, uh, particularly childcare for people who provide pre-K services. We're also talking about making a down payment on universal pre-K, starting in the gateway cities. Uh, the governor has acknowledged that this is a major concern and priority for her. But that this budget is not that, it is a down payment, it is a beginning toward universal pre-K. All right, and I don't think I missed, I mean, there's a, the list of things that are on the education spending budget is long, and some of it doesn't apply to us, we're not a rural edu, we're not a rural system. So that's where we are. And again, the point of the budget hearings is to really make a decision about whether the Commonwealth can live with this budget. And the budget does include some substantial tax breaks. Particularly, uh, amongst short-term capital gains, long-term capital gains, the estate tax. And so we're, we're in a robust discussion right now about what. You know, what are the needs of the communities and, you know, how can we both invest in the right places and at the same time? Give tax breaks to the same, um, your groups of people or industries.
Great.
Thank you, Don.
Yeah, Mr. Cruz, I got a, a quick question on. So the, um, chapter seventy formula, uh, that was restructured, so Newburyport, we did get a bump, so we're pleased with that. And then I know we're all working towards, um, looking at. Special education and funding circuit breaker at the full seventy-five percent. You know, the other piece that, as you know, uh, being on school committee, understanding school. The transportation piece, um, that's impacting, I would say that would be one. Piece that impacts all districts across the Commonwealth, regardless if you're rural, suburban, uh, or urban. Is that also, um, an emphasis, you think, as we're moving forward, as you said, there may be more pockets down the road? For relief?
Yeah, yeah, a- a- as all my school committee colleagues here know, transportation is the grand budget buster. Um, and certainly coming out of the pandemic, I mean, we saw significant, uh, challenges with our transportation system, and then, um, I'm not sure if Newburyport. Was acutely impacted by some of the recent waves of, uh, migration, but then also, uh, an increase in, um, students. That are unhoused, uh, who are also in need of transportation services. Uh, and so this has been an issue here in Salem for sure, and it is across the Commonwealth. And I know that in the supplemental budget that is currently being negotiated by the conference committee. Um, that there is some funding in there that is designated around some of the increased transportation costs. Uh, but in the long term, as a Commonwealth, we do need to have a conversation about how districts are, um, on the hook for transportation. Uh, so I'd like to see that certainly be a part of the conversation as we think about what what it's going to take to have a sustainable system, uh, for. Public transit, uh, for our students, um, and I, I think one of the things that I'd love to see is the state really step in, um, to kind of, uh, I think, provide a little bit more. Uh, regulation with respect to these private transportation companies, uh, yeah, we recently, uh, much to my own chagrin, uh, actually, uh. Defunded our, um, our public, uh, Salem Public Schools transportation, uh, system, uh, in favor of, um. Moving to a full contract with NRT, so we had a hybrid model before, uh, but as folks may be familiar with, once you start, uh, going down the road of privatization. Um, there's really some practices within the field that make it uncompetitive, so you really can't shop around for price after your first contract. Um, and simply speaking, I'd love to see the administration, uh, which the lieutenant governor having her there is really instrumental, she knows that this issue exists. Uh, we need to come down and not only provide more funding, but also more guidance to districts, uh, and I'd love to see more regionalization of some of these contracts with these private. Um, transportation companies who, quite frankly, they're going to each and every single district and pitting us against each other in their contracts, so, um, yeah, absolutely. I think that this is advocacy that we need to be doing through both the M A, through mask, uh, and certain, the legislature.
Great, thank you.
Superintendent, I would just add that in the supplemental budget, they're talking about covering regional transportation, but not city transportation.
Yeah, I think for for us, that's one of. Yeah, special education, it's one of the driving factors. Um, as we develop our budget, I think we're well over a million dollars in transportation.
We're, we're getting close, so from my perspective, from the voice from the other table, um, we talk about transportation, one is specialized transportation, that is. Blowing up for every district, because you can't find drivers, and so the prices keep going up, but all, as of regular transportation. The issue is really going to be, we have to love to bid next year, and as many who are probably aware. Um, all those smaller bus companies are being gobbled up by a new entity out there, so. NRT, Salzer, and a few others are now actually all part of the same corporate conglomerate, so I'm going to confirm with both bid, what it's going to do to our pricing.
Yeah, we've heard that too. Oh, okay, so in the interest of, um, giving Representative Cruz time to get ready for his meeting, which is an important one. Are there any other questions that we can answer for you at this point in time? Or, uh, let me rephrase it, are there things that you would like for us to advocate for as we go through this budgeting process? I hear special ed transport, but, um, is there anything else specific?
No, I'm, I'm also part of the North Shore Superintendent's Roundtable, and we have that legislative. Um, committee, subcommittee that's working, uh, with Mr. Cruz, yourself and other state reps, so. Uh, we're a very tight-knit group, um, you know, twenty-four districts on the North Shore, so. You know, I, I think you are well informed on some of the challenges, uh, throughout the North Shore Superintendent's Roundtable, so. I don't have anything else to add.
Okay.
Just that fourteen percent increase.
Yeah.
Getting addressed.
Yeah, so that was the other piece of. Um, Representative Shan, if you want to just talk, and maybe Mr. Cruz, just at the end. Of that OSD fourteen percent increase, uh, for special ed out of district tuition. You know, as you know, it's always been around two percent, so when we anticipate the increased bump. But that's significant for Newburyport, if we just take, uh, level service what we have now, that's a six hundred thousand dollar increase. If those, um, out of district placement tuition costs go up to the fourteen percent.
So I, that's, I, I'll take that one on, so first of all, the reason for the increase. Is that the teachers in that system were being paid thirty thousand dollars left per year than Massachusetts public school teachers.
So in order for them not to unionize, they're throwing the money out.
And so the.
Exactly.
So essentially, we're talking about covering this large increase, right? That's the fifteen million dollar increase to help districts adjust to this chapter seven six six special education funding formula. So that is part of the budget.
Representative Shan, didn't you say something five hundred something million towards a circuit breaker, right?
Right, five hundred and three million total to the circuit breaker, and again, remember, this is the floor, we have the opportunity to ask for more money. So five hundred and three in the special education circuit budget, budget breaker, excuse me. Um, and then fifteen million specifically to help districts adjust to the fourteen percent tuition increase that you're talking about.
Right. Fifteen million divided by how many? Well, our, our, our need is six hundred thousand. Right, right, that doesn't go very far.
Yeah, yeah, and I think the Representative Shan's point, the, the base budget is what's been proposed in H one by the governor. Um, and so there is a collection of reps right now, including Rep. Sean, myself, uh, and others who are planning on. Every single one of us at our Ways and Means meeting, raising this fourteen percent threshold and seeing if we can get some more, um. Funding allocated toward this particular issue, uh, because it is going to be a budget buster, I mean, I'm, I'm on the phone almost daily with my superintendent. We're trying to get as close to actual as we develop our final budget, uh, because Salem's in a pretty precarious situation with chapter seventy. We've already had to make a few transfers that really put us in a tenuous situation where I don't want to make any reductions in force, but we'll have to do what's necessary. Uh, in order to serve kids here in. In order to serve kids here in Salem. So we certainly hear you on the need to address that. I think there's a couple of reps who have traditionally been the circuit breaker kind of. The Representative Shannon and I can make sure that we're signing on to their letters, but also raising it up at our respective Ways and Means Meetings. To ensure that they're hearing from the, the membership and from our districts that this is, this is one of the most pressing issues. Because no district plans for a fourteen percent increase in, in those tuition costs.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
It's ten o'clock, so I think we can let the State House people split. Thanks so much for your time and Representative Shannon, we'll talk soon about all this. And everybody else, thank you very much. Ethan, can you stay on?
Uh, let me just add one thing. I, yesterday I did spend time with Desi on behalf of the Amesbury delegation. So that is also something that we can, we can bring to the table if you have further questions about your cherry sheet. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and just so, just so you know, the person in charge of make the chapter seventy allocations lives in Newburyport.
Oh, what's their house number?
You wouldn't tell me either. Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, Representative Cruz, and good luck today.
Thank you. It's a pleasure. Take care, folks.
Okay, bye-bye.
Ethan, you're still here, right?
I'm here.
Okay, so you're just on audio, so I'm just gonna let you sit here.
My influence, yeah.
So maybe for Phil, so the chapter seventy from four point six to five point six. Do you know what, what part of that is because of kindergarten and what part of it is because of?
You know, I, I would really like to meet up with Roger Hatch. Genius that Desi created this thing.
Okay.
And I'd just like to stick in my dark alley and yell at him.
Okay.
I do have, and I'll have to find it, but I, I do have. An email. Stating that just the Newburyport Public School rate that I think was over three hundred and seventy something thousand. Because of that kindergarten. So I'll find that and then I can send it to you.
So, so maybe it's in that area, like two thirds and a third.
There is a positive impact because previously because kindergarten was only half day and the other half was he had to pay for it.
Right.
Kindergarten students were like kind of just half people.
So it's like doubling the number of kids.
Yeah, correct. And then every year, that formula will be accounting for those.
And there's some other increases because the number of angry language owners that we have, because the Afghan refugees also. Plays a factor in this as well.
Right.
The one part of the chapter seventy formula that does not work, in my opinion, that's never worked, is the way they calculate the special ed component. It's always. Well underweighted reality. Sorry, that might have.
No, no, thank you.
I thought it was just a fact. I was writing it down.
So, on, on that special ed component you mentioning. Does that really relate to, you know, how MAPS, Mass Association approved private schools advocates for special ed? Increases, because.
I, I, that I don't know.
Okay, because I mean, traditionally, and I'm familiar with MAPS, because I worked in special ed administration a long time ago. You know, generally, the increase is, isn't really two percent. It's generally between three and four percent every year. And then this fourteen percent increase, I mean, it just strikes me that all of a sudden, they're noticing that. The salaries are thirty K under the average. But it's generally, you know, the whole MAPS that kind of drives that increase to special ed. Association of pre-private schools.
Yeah, so OSD, the people that set the rates, so you have to credit the out-of-district placement.
Right.
People, because they did, you know. It, it took us all. So every year, they. Proposed increases.
Right.
With that being said, because of inflation, because of the way the economy is right now, they made a great case of, you know, being underpaid and then. So when they came out in October, like when we all saw our fourteen percent out-of-district placement, we were like. This is, yeah, this is really outrageous. And then so our association was really working with the legislators saying, hey, if this stays at fourteen percent. And these out-of-district placements raise their tuition costs fourteen percent, it's gonna. You know, right off the bat, we're looking at six hundred thousand dollar increase without even. You know, we, we have other stuff that we're doing to try to minimize those costs right now, but it is significant. And, and so they, they kind of. You know, not, not to get in turf wars, but. You know, and that's why, like us, for example, we have two programs, our therapeutic program. And our IDC program at the high school, which is like a transitional program for students with severe special needs. So we have them until twenty-two. So we have room in those programs and we're reaching out to the local superintendents. Because if you had an out-of-district placement of eighty thousand dollars, we could take on a student for forty or forty-five thousand and save a district. So those are some of the things that we're doing. So we do have one student that has tuitioned in. In one of our programs, a therapeutic program. So. But yeah, it's crazy.
I just, just a point to be made. That unless things have changed really dramatically recently, charter schools also pay significantly less than public schools due to their teachers. And I just, I just wonder if, you know, if they're doing it for sped, then. Somebody's gonna start advocating that we give a larger chunk of money to charter schools so that they can bring up salaries.
Correct. And so the other piece too, that challenges, so. You know, obviously, we work with everybody. There's a place for everybody, out-of-district placement, charter schools. But the other piece is if there is a student that's not making effective progress in a charter school and special education services are needed. Then that student comes back. To, let's say, Newburyport Public Schools, and then we're the ones that are funding the special education services.
So, yeah.
So that's another cost. So we have had some charter school students that have come back and we had to do out-of-district placement.
Yeah.
So Bruce, if I didn't forget, I haven't spent five years with a charter school. There's no case for a charter.
We won't hold it against them.
There's, charter schools can't make a case like the special ed schools that in terms of getting difficult funding, because they're getting the poor people that we have. So they make a. Put my business hat on. They're making a big business decision as to what to pay their staff. And so, you know, when you look at it, when I was down in Renaissance down at Hyde Park. Non-union teachers to complain that they could go to Boston and make a lot more money. Well, yes, they could. But I've always said that Boston has a salary schedule that no one can afford. Even Boston can't afford it. So the difference is. Last week where I was working is, yes, we might pay you less and the teachers tend to be younger, but we also have two adults in every classroom. Whereas in Boston, you can make a whole load more money, but you're gonna be one person in a classroom with more students. So, you know, it's a phil- it's a philosophical issue. So, yes. On average, special, especially on average, charter school teachers are paid less. Is it significant? It depends on where you are. Where I was down in. We will look at data with surrounding communities and we've worked that far off. And so you pack, the entire package of the benefits and everything else, we were very competitive in that case. So. Long as you say they don't have a case to make up for that.
Just. Don't want to be quite blindsided.
Can I just walk through something in my head and just tell me if that makes sense? So. Using around numbers, the state aid increases a million dollars. About four point six to five point six, but then. You peel out three hun- three hundred to cover kindergarten, which never hit our budget because we took it out of SRS. So that is a wash, which is in a good way. So that's three hundred. So now we're down to seven hundred. And then at least according to the cherry sheet, the charter school increase, they'll, they'll get sixty thousand dollars more, so take that off. So roughly, you know, out of the million dollars, let's say, and to use round numbers, say we take off four hundred, there's about six hundred that's left. That maybe we consider new, new money that's not already encumbered by something else. So, so far, if I'm making sense. My question is. I'm basically trying to get to a sense of what's new versus what's going to be absorbed by existing salary increases that have already been. Agreed upon in the, but in the recent contract that was done and then just operating costs, electricity and so forth. Is, is there any new money or does it sort of all wash down to zero? And then just the, I came to the presentation briefly, I think it was last week. But the asks were fairly, the numbers weren't huge, you know, seven, ten thousand, eighteen thousand, seventy thousand. And then last piece is just, will there be any, any money for capital? I just wanted to talk about that a little bit too. So I don't know, it, does my analysis make sense? Am I thinking about it in a way that makes sense? Because this is, this is your world, not mine. So I'm just trying to understand it. If I'm even thinking about it correctly.
There's another portion increase also, Special Opportunity Act that was passed. And I'm fuzzy with details, but there are specific requirements that we have to do in terms of getting that money.
Got it.
So that's another piece that's gonna get pulled out.
Got it.
So what's real new increase? Let me take a, let me take a chunk of that and shot it and see if I can do a little more and show them they have.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that as part in what Phil and I are working on is that, that whole fourteen percent. That six hundred thousand dollars just for the coverage of the tuition.
So if that comes true and something else doesn't break, you're six hundred square foot, in other words. And then you're back to city budget. Crowded city budget.
Correct.
To try and.
Let me interject right there. But the money we're getting for an increase could roughly offset the six hundred thousand, right? So, as we speak right now, we could be at a net zero.
Right, yeah. Circuit breaker is seventy-five.
Chapter seven.
Okay, yeah. Right, so conceive the extra six hundred that this fourteen percent increase is roughly six hundred. And we're getting roughly six hundred minus the. Accounting that they just went through.
Right.
So we're conceivably at zero, right?
Correct.
Not counting any net new increases in budget one or anything like that that goes on. So we're all in, in search of additional funds.
They're gonna take that money, put it this year twenty-four, and then start spending it this year twenty-five.
Yeah, well.
There's some time in terms of when.
Yeah.
The taxes.
Well, they'll have, they'll have it. They'll have it. And, but my understanding is it's not going to K to twelve. What they have planned that they've laid out is, is transportation. A lot of transportation needs, right? And higher education with, with that asterisk of. Child's kidney, right? So, it's, it's not, that, that is the big gap, right? It's the K through twelve. It would all be lucky if we got it twenty-five, because transportation's gonna go up again, right?
Right.
You know.
So they, yeah.
So I just had a question about the timeline here, because it, it sounds pretty optimistic that they're gonna offset, that the state is gonna offset these. The fourteen percent increase. But I'm just trying to figure out if we'll, we'll know that in time for our budget to reflect.
So when we.
Yeah, you're laughing.
Yeah, well, when we do our planning, so we don't even, we don't bank on chapter seven. So we're not saying, hey, we need, the only thing I'm happy about is that we know the cost of kindergarten. Was covered through our enrollment, right? So we, and just, you know, we utilized three hundred thousand for SRS with the understanding. Enrollment and then whatever that formula was, when they kick it back, it showed like, yeah, cost neutral. We got. Free full-day kindergarten for the district. Those numbers are gonna continue to be part of the formula. So as we begin our budgeting process, we look at all of those, all of the grants and all the resources and all of that. Not depending on the governor to reimburse us and all of that. If it comes to light. Then that's wonderful. All of a sudden, if we say, hey, we have this other piece of money, but as we're doing our budget, we're not really counting on. Some of that funding to.
So we do have to budget for the fourteen percent increases.
We do. And, and so right now, we're reaching out to the individual, because remember, those out-of-district replacements. You know, because they, they heard what, you know, we're trying to do. So, in the sense, like, if they're gonna increase by the fourteen percent, right? And we can undercut them with our own programming, then we'll pull, we'll see if we can pull some of those students out of there. So what we're doing.
In your plan.
Forever, yeah, exactly. And the good news is with all the literacy work that we've done. In our, our language-based program, in a year and a half, we haven't had any students go to. So every year, we'd be sending a handful of students to Landmark for seventy-five thousand dollars. So for a year and a half, we haven't had it. We're building up our therapeutic program with the same idea to pull some of those students back that social emotional needs. And then our graduate program. So. But anyway, so, yeah.
So. Well, the, to go in reverse order, so on the special ed, what I, what I guess I don't understand is that if the. If the state's supposed to pick up everything with the circuit breaker.
They pay a seventy-five percent.
Seventy-five, so that's the savings. So by bringing them in, you save the twenty-five percent. That's basically the, that's what you get.
No, we would say, so if we brought a student, let's say you're a student in a therapy program. And one of them's called Solstice. We pay ninety thousand dollars a year, right?
Okay.
So we develop our own programming. And that's why last year, if you remember the budget, we were putting staff in, a lot of special ed staff. So let's say we have four kids out of district placement at ninety thousand. But now we have a program that mimics the same services they're getting out of district. Once we bring them back, there's no tuition cost, no transportation cost. So we could be saving around a hundred thousand dollars per student.
So, yeah, I'm sorry, Phil. If I'm, you know. The way the circuit breaker works, when you send a student out of district, you first are on the first fifty thousand. So if the out-of-district tuition hundred thousand, okay, pay the first circuit breaker that reimbursed you for seventy-five percent of anything above fifty.
Right.
So we'd be, we'd be end up paying on that first, right, eighty-seven thousand, they give us thirteen thousand back. It's like a rebate.
Yeah, okay.
But, you know, we don't get the whole hundred percent back, because Jay Sullivan is the head of planning, as I said. If I give you all the back, you're most given the year.
Got it. So and then, sorry, just one other follow, just on the timing. So is this where you, you typically would budget out of choice? And then to make up that gap, and then when the, when this final budget comes down, recently anyways, it has come out more favorable. So then you're able to not spend the choice today.
Yeah, so we, what we've been doing, and Phil can talk better, is utilizing, so we utilize our grants, utilize choice. To defray the appropriations for the city. So let's say the overall budget, eight percent, but we know we can utilize. Two point three percent of that through grants and choice. That's what we'll go.
Also, because we have a circuit breaker reimbursement. We have been very successful here in the last X number of years of carrying that over. In other words. Circuit breaker money that we get this year is for last year's expenses.
Right.
So we always try to end the current year with the money that we've reimbursed. But we have a buffer going into the fall year. But this year, we have a bump in terms of unexpected students going out. We will be digging into our buffer to get us through. And then going into next year. You know, we'll finally get reimbursed our increased costs this year. So you're always, they're always catching up to you. So when you have a year where something goes off a lot, it's a year or two where you gotta come up with a patchwork recovery until the reimburse starts coming through.
Thank you.
No.
So, can I? Am I interrupting anyone?
No, no, I just, I wanted to be clear on the timeline and you did explain that we, we do have to budget for these increased costs and then.
Correct. And not sit and wait around, right?
Yeah, no.
All right, thank you. That was.
Uh, yeah, so. In the, in the in placement process that you guys have gone through, right, it's, we, we have a sunk cost in that. Right? We are sunk cost is our staff that we've invested, the updated programming that we have to pay for, you know, those types of things. Is there a, are you guys doing, you know, in my world, we do a profit loss to see how our income is coming in. With our in placements versus, because we're not, we're not saving the ninety thousand. We're saving a portion of the ninety thousand. Because we have staff.
Yeah, we have staff in the program, correct.
So, are we, are, are we at that point? Are we, have we reached the break even yet? Do we have a project to break even of where this in placement?
Yeah, well, we just know, like, for, for example, so we brought, in our therapeutic program at the high school, for example, we brought three students back. I think we have two staff, so two staff at, you know, sixty-five thousand dollars and then paraprofessional. So that staffing in place brought three students back at ninety thousand. So there is a cost savings, which we set to bring down those special ed costs.
Yeah.
Which then, you know, when you're looking at the out-of-district tuition increase, if we can bring back, so that's part of the other plan that. So if we have to pay six hundred thousand, you know, taking all of our kids now, move it in, but if we can. Meet with parents by the, you know, between now and the end of the year and say, hey, listen, here's a program that we've developed. Would love to have your child come back, then that, you know, cuts into those tuition costs.
But parents have to agree to that.
Yeah, they do. Sometimes they do.
Yeah, no, I, I, listen, I, I get, I, I get.
That's ideal. I mean, they'll be called to develop your own programming, obviously, is for us, is to have Newburyport kids in Newburyport, number one. But number two, to kind of bring down those special ed costs. So we're not like waiting for the state to help us. We're trying to figure it out.
Yeah, I, I get it. I, I just have a follow-up on that, because in the example you used, right, and, and I'm not holding you to it, I just want to say, in the example you used. If we're saving ninety thousand dollars a kid and we're spending. if we're saving ninety thousand dollars a kid, and we're spending sixty five plus benefits, we're spending eighty thousand dollars uh to do that, we're really saving, you know, potentially we're only saving thirty thousand dollars in this program. And like, really, my longer term question is, when do we break even? When do you project break even, the three students broke even? But when is this revenue positive? When is this, you know, because every student you have, you need, you know, uh, student parent, yeah, student teacher uh ratio, so you know, is seven the right number? Is, you know, three the right number, because it's a break even?
Like, for example, when we look at, so if you look at, since I've been here, right, my fifth year, so we were sending a lot of kids to Landmark, right? So, and those students that are at Landmark, we may not bring them back, but we know, like, every year, if we were sending four to eight kids to Landmark every year, we know after a year and a half, those service, we, parents are happy with our programming, in district programming. So we haven't sent kids out there, do you know what I'm saying? So we kind of.
I do, I understand what you're trying to do.
And that's, yeah, and that's kind of, you know, what what we're trying to do. Those, the three students that we brought back um at ninety thousand dollars, you know, it's two hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year that was going to out of district tuition.
Right.
Yeah.
The other part of the analysis we gotta bring in is also the cost of the.
Right.
Right. And that ninety thousand does not include the cost.
Correct.
Yeah, I.
For the savings.
It's just, it's just, it's one area that we look at really hard. Um, so the cost upfront in our budget, you might say, oh, wow, they're adding more teachers, why are they doing that? Because we know if we can develop these programs in district, we're gonna almost like stop the bleeding with special ed costs.
I suppose, honestly, you were asking about, it's really like a thirty percent um same, or thirty thousand dollar, you know, savings or whatever, could be.
Right.
It could be, but you know, the the question of like, when do you get to zero? I don't wanna speak for these people, but I can imagine that they would be like, I don't care if it's zero, because those kids are back
Right.
where they belong. That's a huge part of it, it's not just the money.
Right.
You know, you're sending a kid on a bus for forty minutes each direction every day and not being with their peers who live around the corner.
That's for sure.
That's worth whatever that tiny, you know, thirty thousand dollars we get, I don't care if it ever gets to zero personally, because all those kids are here. Why would you wanna send all your kids somewhere else?
Right.
That's more important to me than money is, I mean, if, you're still gonna wanna lose money, but I'm not trying to make a profit, profit either, in my role here. Now, and I would guess these three feel similarly.
Yeah, so, so, I don't want my words.
My, uh, steam cough.
I don't want my words being misconstrued.
No, I know, but I just wanna make sure it's not just about money.
That's all. Well, we, we already had a bunch of people.
And I know.
So, but secondly, my question was, you know, we've listed this as potential in placement as positive revenue, right? That, that's what we've had a discussion about today.
Potential positive, yeah.
Potential, right? And potential positive revenue is cost avoidance.
Yes.
So, you know, as the example used, is we're avoiding ninety thousand dollars a year per student, plus, let's say, just for the sake of argument, another ten thousand dollars.
Right.
Two hundred thousand. So, okay, but let, let's say all of a sudden, the whole conversation is it's three hundred thousand instead of two seventy, we'll give it ten thousand each, it's three hundred thousand. There's a cost, there's an offsetting cost to that, and that offsetting cost is you have to um train, you you have to hire the professionals to do it. You have to train them, you have to stay uh on top of the um uh programming that has to happen and all of that kind of stuff, so there's a cost. So the cost avoidance of three hundred is gonna cost us two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to avoid that. So that is a cost avoidance of fifty thousand dollars. It's a, and and oh, by the way, because they can stay local, that's another benefit to that, but, you know, if, if it's costing us three hundred thousand dollars to save three hundred thousand dollars, then that's a net zero. But if it's costing us five hundred thousand dollars to save three hundred thousand dollars, then, like, the bus transportation, we might have to do private placement, because that's a cheaper way to do it. And so, but that's not what I'm here, the third.
You guys think it would ever be cheaper to send a kid out of district? Even with all the extra staff and benefits and all of that?
And so the other piece too is we. We've also, remember, part of what we've done, I think we've done a good job in school committee, is we've taken our our staffing patterns, reallocated some of our special education teachers, we're already part of the, and developing those programs, so we're not adding, you know? Uh, so we tech, every year we look at our special education services, we look at the programming, and is it effective? And if it's not effective, then we repurpose to address the needs of the kids. The literacy program in the uh language base is a prime example, we've had success with that, with our own staff. And then taking a look at the high school therapeutic, and then the I D C program, that's already in existence. It's kind of remodeling that, those staffing patterns to address those needs, because we feel social emotional with students that are out of district plays, in the transitional for our severely special needs students up till twenty two. Those two programs that we have in place, we feel like those are the type of students that we think we can develop and bring back, not send out. There are some students that require a lot of needs in the residential, for example. Uh, that's a significant cost, you know, I think we have seven students residential, that's over two point four million, just in the services that. So those are the things that we look at, and and it's not like, and I think we've been progressive in the sense of not waiting for the state and throwing our hands up and say, oh, well, you know, special ed, you know, we'll just see, it's like, we kind of just take our own issues and try to deal with it within our operational budgets, so.
We're gonna say so.
Yeah, I just wanted to add a piece in terms of the, the budget puzzle that you were just alluding to, um, there's now potential, we have room for these programs to grow in terms of students without adding cost for staff. And we, at this point, have one student who from, is from another district, will be paying us
Tuition.
The, the out of district tuition, so that's added revenue.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't know how much more room there is there, but I know you've been reaching out to other districts to say, hey, you know, that tuition's going up, how about you pay us a little bit less?
Right.
You know, we can undercut those programs, and then we get the revenue.
Correct.
So, uh, uh, that's, I mean, I think that's a big piece of what you were just.
And it's a lot easier transportation.
On those programs and then get the tuition from other communities. I'm all.
And the thing you have to be, sorry, the thing you have to be cognizant of is to have the same outputs and results that the uh, the specialized programs have, right? And, because if you're not aligned with that, then they say, well, it's not quite the same, right? And, and so.
Ideally, we're offering something that's attractive.
Very similar.
Communities, yeah.
Similar, similar in output results and less cost, and that should be a winner.
That's the goal.
Yeah. So, um, I, I think it's, it's an important conversation, because it's one that's really hard to wrap your head around, but I do think part of it, I, I guess, one differ- difference, I guess, and and maybe in thinking among some is cash flow versus income. I mean, I think, I'll, I'll hear a lot about revenue, and I think what I've learned is schools are always just looking for more to come in, more to come in, and counselors think a little bit more in terms of P and Ls, we think of the bottom line, what falls out the bottom. So I get that schools have our cash flow game in a lot of ways, because of the staff, you have a huge staff cost, so you're always looking for just more money to come in, and I frankly, I look sometimes at choice is a cash flow play, um, this tuition for special ed is a cash flow play, and I think the counselor's point in mind too, um, is that, you know, the bottom line matters too, and and so we can absolutely have a policy goal of saying, we wanna have more kids here, and there's a value to that, that's sort of not something we put that we're not talking about in terms of saving money. At the same time, it's important to know for subsidizing that and to what degree, because that comes, maybe is coming from other students, right? So there becomes an equity issue about, does everybody, if you end up spending two hundred thousand dollars, you, us, to to bring one kid in, you have all these other kids, and it's the same argument with the charter, right? We're trying to have this equitable spend across to some degree. It's hard to look at income, and then the other couple of things are um, capital is is another thing, I mean, it's, as long as you have the space, you know, and you don't end up having incurring this, you know, okay, if you bring a special program in that requires space, that's a huge problem, right? Because now you have capital issues, and you just, physical, you might have inability, and then I also worry about um, like anything else, you know, if you have specialties, and then you have a year where you don't need that specialty, right? If you can't reallocate them to something else, you are in a tough position, you carry them, or you let them go, and then you try and rebuild the program later. So I'm just trying to put in some of how maybe counselors think about it a little bit, in terms of we're saying, okay, we usually look and say, this is a policy goal we wanna have, and then we say, if we wanna subsidize it, we should be transparent about, okay, yeah. You know, are we bringing kids in primarily to get them in the district? Are we bringing them in primarily to save money? Is it some combination of both? What if those two things are at odds with each other, which they certainly can be? And, um, you know, we, we have a similar analog with like our city solicitor, right? We wanna have specialty city solicitor who can do like a speci- special kind of law, we would never wanna hire somebody for that. But if it becomes a big enough need, maybe we would, but then what if we have two years where we don't need that? So that's on, I think, and I, I concur, I mean, I think the capital of staffing, the long-term implications of some of these things, unfortunately, it sounds like we don't have any shortage of need, which is, you know,
Right.
unfortunately, a reality, so. Some of that, the staffing questions about, like, hey, you need another teacher, and all that stuff, Sean's done a great job with just the reallocation, so even like Lisa Furlong.
Right.
Right? She didn't cost anymore.
No.
Because she got more money for her new job, because we reallocated other people.
Yeah, we, we had a STEM coordinator, district STEM coordinator within the operational budget that we shifted, because of Lisa Marie's strengths and curriculum instruction, that's.
Can I just ask one last question? When you solicit these other communities for the special ed, is that choice, or is that?
To where it's about a district.
Yes.
We're, we're, we're not a district program, so therefore, we can charge whatever, whatever we wanna charge.
And this is something new, so this isn't, um, this is a, an avenue that I think only we're pursuing, and so we did receive one student um, in the therapeutic program, so it's kind of like piloting to see if it's gonna work. If they have success, which they are right now, then I can market, and I'm not marketing for the whole state, I'd be looking at Amesbury, Triton, Kentucky, because, you know, talking with them, you know, they may see, you know, because everyone's gonna need a kind of a budget crunch, and they're looking at cost savings, so if you are superintendent in Kentucky, and you have, you're sending, say, two students in a transitional program, and it's costing you a hundred and eighty thou, you know, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and y'all looking at your budget, and you're trying to figure out, where can I save money? So that hundred and eighty that they could undercut, you know, to us, might save a teacher, an algebra teacher, you know what I mean? So it's.
So we don't own that student the same way with choice, though, if there's, if you can't take them the next year, because we have a need, you don't have to, to accept them. But there's also, there's no circuit breaker or any of those.
No, because it would be a hundred percent cost of this, our special ed program for them.
So that's one where the profit loss is critical, right? You should, that's a business, right? You're, you're, it's, it's almost would be like an enterprise fund in a sense, in that, in that you.
But it's, you know.
It's hard to allocate costs, I can imagine, because that person.
And as we, and, each too, that's really important, it's, it's as we're presenting our budget, remember, it's, you, there's parents and that are associated with those numbers.
Sure.
So when I say, for example, I would never say that publicly, residential, you know, seven students are costing a lot of money, if you are a parent listening, you know what I mean? So as we, as we talk around special, as we gotta be, you know, a little cognizant of how we're explaining things. Um, because it doesn't, if you're listening, you're that parent, and you're like, I can't believe there, um, of money, you know, um, this.
For example, during the campaign, I was going door to door, and I had come out and said something about, you know, you've done a lot with working with the, the district to try to bring some of these kids back, and I knocked on someone's door, and she is completely happy with their out of district placement for my special ed child, and
you got a, yeah, I got it.
Right. You know, I was gonna say, there is those parents out there too, that are just very happy with it, I was just parents, but it's nice having, it's nice bringing those pro- programs to have options.
And in the, in the, right, and the needs and the disabilities that we feel we can educate here. I mean, the, the students that are at at residential is so significant, we could never duplicate the needs of those students.
Well, that wouldn't be cost effective.
Yeah.
Correct. One last question, I, I guess on this is that, um, it, it, um, it's, it's a potential for us right now, but the state always seems to catch up that says, well, if you're doing this, we're gonna subtract this from your
Right.
uh, your calculation at age.
Right.
And have.
Keep it under the radar.
Right. Have, have, you know, especially, there's the other program that the mayor had mentioned the other night, is that, you know, potentially bringing employees with a tuition program, et cetera, along the way. Um, you know, is there any inkling that we've heard that, you know, the state will adjust our funding formulas, because something like that is going to.
No, we're, I think we're looking at that, um, because one of the pieces with school choices, you're falling under the state program, so you, although we're only getting uh, you, you receiving, let's say, five thousand dollars, but you're getting that five thousand dollars every year the students hear. If you tuition in, and this is what we're looking at, um, you're not, you're not getting that money every single year, you know what I mean? So if, so let's say, I say, I'll pay sixteen five, my son's in third grade, I give the district sixteen five, but the following year, I'm not giving. So now, all of a sudden, now if my student needs services, they're not gonna be part of, like, some of the laws, do you know what I'm saying? They're not gonna be part of school choice, they're not gonna be part of circuit breaker.
But is that sixteen five every year they're gonna pay, or is that only one?
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
So that, those are the things, we haven't seen, um, you know, we're looking, you know, through the, we're looking to do our research on that.
Yeah, yeah.
Tuitioning in, um, you know, we do have our uh exchange program, but that's just for the seniors. So if you are a senior from Brazil, you tuition in, you pay the full tuition.
Yeah.
But you're only here for a year.
Yeah, I, 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 I may have missed, uh, um, not asked the question correctly, right? And so, all I was kind of getting at, is I, I know these programs are early, is, do we think there's a rumbling that the state might hold that against us for any of these innovative programs you're trying to, right? If you bring in a student at ninety thousand, for example, will the state say, well, you don't need ninety thousand in your, in your sped reimbursement, so therefore, we're gonna take it off the top, right?
Yeah.
Have we seen any inklings to that? The answer I hear is no.
Not, not under special education.
They're not our students.
Correct.
Right. They're not helping their own numbers, and you don't go through the circuit break for it, that's the sending difference, if they.
Okay.
And we, we've sent, just when I was a principal at Beverly High, um, we sent, uh, there was a program in Moblet, uh, social emotional program uh, that we would send some of our kids to, instead of sending them out to like a solstice and stuff.
Um, so it's twenty to eleven, the whole idea of this was like, give the council a leg up before we get to May, so you can bring it to your budget people at your next meeting, so we talked about this, give all those details to the rest of your, rest of the council. Is there anything, you got all the, you know, from November till last week's budget presentation?
I did get it, yeah.
Uh, there's some things as we.
Does, do you guys wanna, you or Steve wanna say anything about the budget on the stamp meeting on Monday? I said Alex Costello, I've no regrets. Um, do you have anything you wanna say to the council about that presentation?
Wouldn't have a great.
Yeah.
Well, that is the best calendar meeting we've ever. Calendar. Actually, when you're going away, we'll schedule the calendar.
Discussion.
I still let everybody know I was gonna vote no, so.
The whole vibe to the meeting, I thought was better, too.
Yeah, yeah. Sing.
People are happy. Um, no, I was just saying.
Calm people, do you have any thing you wanna say to the council, or anything about the, that latest budget presentation, and then you guys can ask questions, bud?
On, not about the latest budget presentation, but about what you're saying in terms of programming, what you're really looking for is a proper economy of scale. I used to work on these programs up in New Hampshire, and uh, and I've seen them succeed, I've seen, you know, surrounding districts send the district I worked for kids, and what happens in New Hampshire is in the springtime, they have town meeting, and they decide where they wanna raise taxes. And as a result of, you know, taking these kids and didn't have to raise the taxes, so, but you have to find that economy of scale. You also have to have parents agree to have you, the kids, come into the program. Dover, New Hampshire, about fifteen years ago, had a really outstanding program that they drew kids into, but you also have to keep your services up.
Mm-hmm.
And the only last thing that I, I wanna say, and it probably isn't, uh, uh, well, I'll just say it, one of the things with the charter school is if they're not providing services, special ed services, and all of a sudden, the student needs them, then they have to come back to a new report, and new report basically picks up the pieces and the cost. So maybe that's something we have to examine and take a look at the last five years, how many kids have we had?
And you don't get, you don't get a rebate till the following year, you don't get a rebate for that lost kid.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, and, 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 but, but this is also where I think there need, and I'm not saying, I don't know to, to the degree of collaboration we have with the charter school, but I think it's important that, you know, our administration works with their administration to, to take a look at where we see shortcomings, where we see things that we've need to address, because I can tell you, in my experience as a school committee member, I've, I've had, you know, I've advocated for a handful of charter school families who have had their kids come back to the district for services. And uh, it is, uh, you know, it's, it's a, it's a factor, and if we can work together with the charter school, I think that'll be a good thing, and, you know, help uh, help maybe them better assess the needs and us ultimately. And us ultimately provide better services to that student who was, you know, you know, a, a child of, you know, every one.
And I think as we develop our budgets, if there's, you know, I have a understanding of what. You know, the city council is kind of looking at it a little bit more, so I can incorporate some of that, uh, into it. Is there other areas as we're appearing? That you think would be helpful?
Yeah, I, I mean, just a, a quick, not, not to discuss today, I know we're running out of time, but I think one, number one would be the, uh, the impact, the salary. This is a conversation around salary, so we have a new contract, right? I think last year, three, three and two or something along those lines, three, three, two, two. Um, but one co- conversation that happens all the time is obviously, three, two, two doesn't mean the salary goes up three percent, right? Or going up the ladder, there's all these other retirees, people, and, and, so I think get it. An actual, uh, you know, based on if we just took a very simple, added all the salaries from twenty-two, all the salaries from twenty-three, and just said, what's the change? Would be instructive to, to help us understand what we're doing. The second one is, um, definitely ESER, you know, that conversation continues, so what's coming off? What is be, it being replaced with financially, or are there any things we did that we won't do again? That are either no longer needs, or that we simply think we can't, we can no longer provide. And then, um, the third one would definitely be, um. Capital, Brian came to our meeting a couple of weeks ago and talked about some elevator type things, but, um, this year. Uh, if we, the first year, we do CIP and budget together, because the state finally passed our home rule charter change. So, um, we're not doing two separate processes for CIP and, and another one for budget, and I'm hoping to just get everybody in once. Uh, maybe for a little bit longer, but instead of making you come two nights, as we've often had to do, come for one, but, um. I think some counselors had questions about what the capacity is for the schools to handle any capital inside of its own budget, which I guess was done. Many years ago, not since I've been on that I've ever seen that, other than small things, I think, that come up. But also what, maybe a review of what's been bought in the last couple of years, what's been done, whatever. And then, uh, what the top, the top things are. I know that the, um. The lab thing is very much in question, um, unrelated directly, I guess, to NPS, but. Certainly Nexus would be Whittier, and their project, which, which they're gonna be, I'm sure they're gonna be asked a million questions about when they come in.
There's no way that's gonna happen.
Yeah.
Every, all eleven have to vote for it.
But all of us are just looking at it, and, and, you know, there's trepidation, right? So I'm, I'm just saying, you know. So that's important, and then, um, so salary capital ESER, um. I think, I think those are probably some of the, you know, some of the question, and then, and then choice is sort of now become a bit of a perennial conversation, so. And, um, and the mayor mentioned on Monday this, uh, new idea to have teachers be able to bring their, their kids. City employees, okay, maybe some, just more info about what that, is that choice, or is that?
No, that'd be outside of choice.
Yeah, so it's like tuition, like the other thing, so, but, well, anyways, that, that, one of the questions will be, how does tuition get set? Right? So I'm assuming you could set a tuition, you want to set a tuition that's really reasonable, because you said it was a retention, an employee retention idea. Assuming you're not gonna charge them like, I, I don't know, that's, that's.
Well, it has to be what it actually costs, but.
Well, I don't know, I don't.
It's sixty-five. Right. But choice, we get five thousand, so we get a third of what it actually costs.
But if it's outside of choice, you won't get, but anyways, that's just.
Positively valid, it's been very consistent since nineteen. We can count on that money.
So, but I would, if that's something we would end up voting on, then I would certainly wanna vote for, if the minimum. What the actual cost is, not less, just because they work here.
Yeah. No, I, I.
So, we're not supposed to make money off it, we're supposed to.
These are operational budgets, so.
Yeah. Yeah, we're not talking about the thing.
Yeah. And my, um, colleagues couldn't make it today from budget, but I will certainly reach out and ask everybody to provide, and, you know, thoughts, questions.
And I recorded this too, so I can send you the link.
Yeah.
And stuff.
That's my best I could try and give a little heads up.
All right.
Inside of where the conversation might, might trend, but thank you, yeah, for inviting.
Thank you.
Uh, move to adjourned?
So move.
Second.
Oh, favor.
I, this is your move.
Yes. Yeah, we, we canceled budget because we didn't make.
I didn't see you guys stand up, so.
Sort of bittersweet to reflect on the irony that, um, when I chaired the.